This time we reconvene the meeting and we're being joined by Eric Kriegen and some of his colleagues with the Veterans Affairs Commission for especially that. So we'll let you start, Terry.
Today we're celebrating retirement of Don Regenweather. He's spent nineteen years as Commissioner of Veterans Affairs. And I gotta tell you, the last roughly year that I've been working with him, it's been nice because as I was going through this and of course you always get encouraged by, you know, my predecessor and his predecessor. But it was nice to have the stability on the board and so on and so seeing him go was not necessarily something I wanted, but it was felt, he felt it was his time. And we just want to take a couple of minutes to say thank you. Nineteen years is a long time.
Yes, yes.
I mean, you know, for us in our community, you know, because we've already done pretty much our entire careers in other ways. For us to serve for five or six years on, in this capacity is pretty normal. Nineteen years is significant. So we've got a couple of things that we wanted to do to celebrate this today and I'm gonna start by turning this over to Mr. Larry Braemer, who was a prior Director for Veterans Affairs. Larry?
It took a while, but they got rid of me. Like what we're saying goes, old soldiers never die, they just fade away. Well, we hope Don doesn't fade away. He's been with us like Terry said for nineteen years and I served with him for basically fifteen years of that as Director. And it was very enjoyable. I had a good commission, serving with Don were Don Myers and Virgil Nimmers. Those two have passed on and we had a, and the position has changed over the years quite a bit from what we used to be. We were one day a week and basically did not do any federal work when I started. Well, that's drastically changed as well Terry knows. It's ninety-nine percent federal work anymore. But a little history on Don. Don was, morning told me the other night, he's born in the Sprigville area. He told me he was born on the road, so I don't know what happened there.
I couldn't wait.
But that's what he told me, so he lists Bellevue as his birthplace, so I guess that's where they took him. But Don basically attended schools there in the Sprigville area, rural schools. He said one was right there at his mailbox, which was gone. He farmed after school and then when he was drafted in fifty-three, he served two years honorably in the Army. After he was discharged, he went back to farming in the Sprigville area. In sixty-four, I don't know when he met his wife, but they were married in sixty-four and they've been married over fifty years now. So, but lifelong resident of Jackson County. You have one child, Ronnie? Or two?
Three.
Two. Three. I couldn't remember, I'm sorry.
Three boys.
Three boys. But I think really Don wanted to give up the commission for one reason. He's been wintering in Texas down there for the last few years and I think he misses that sombrero. But it's been.
That's why the top of his head's not.
Yes, I know. He wanted to get away from that sombrero. But it was an honor to serve with Don and he did a good job. He gave me enough rope to hang myself at times, but I never did to my knowledge. It was a very good commission to work with. So, Don, thanks for all the years of working with me.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Would you like to do this?
Likewise, I think we have a letter from the Board of Supervisors thanking you for your years of service and we certainly appreciate everything that you've done for the county and for the veterans. And there's a letter and then I think Terry's going to give you your certificate of appreciation. And we'd like some words from you too, if you are up to it.
Well, I feel pretty humble getting all this credit. I felt honored and privileged to be able to serve for nineteen years my fellow comrade veterans. And I walk away from the job with a lot of satisfaction. And I want to thank you, Lord, for putting up with me too, renewing my license every time. My term expired in June and I chose now was the time to step aside, the changing of the guard.
Well, we certainly, we certainly appreciate all of the, I mean, we realize there's been a lot of changes in how things happen and you've adapted to those changes and I think you've been a real attribute to the county and to the Veterans Association. So we, we thank you for that.
And we thank you. We know there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes that we don't see and the public don't see that you gentlemen do down there in making life better for people who made life better for us. So I just want to thank you for all your service and what you gentlemen do for us.
Thank you so much.
I'd like to echo the same comments. Thank you, all the veterans here for your service and how important you guys are in everyday life. You guys truly are leaders and thank you for that.
Thank you so much for the comments.
All right, Ed, can you come on up here for a second? Larry, why don't you join us also? Stand right beside him over there. All right, so what we have for you is a certificate of appreciation from the Jackson County Supervisors, okay? It goes along with the letter. We had something special done for you, okay? We contacted our local Congressman and Mr. Braley was nice enough to have this flag flown in your honor over the U.S. Capitol. What we did was, is there's a certificate that goes along with that and it says, "The flag of the United States of America. This is to certify the accompanying flag was flown over the United States Capitol on May seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen at the request of the Honorable Bruce L. Braley, Member of Congress. This flag was flown for Don Regenweather in celebration of nineteen years of service to veterans as a member of Jackson County Veterans Affairs Commission, July nineteen ninety-five through May of two thousand and fourteen." So that's the certificate that goes along with that and to make that fold and to display it, we have for you. That certificate has been shrunk down and put on this plaque for you and a gold marker here says, "Presented in on Regenweather." I'll get that out, yep. June twenty-fourth, that's today, two thousand and fourteen, on behalf of Jackson County Veterans Affairs, serving those who have served. There you go.
Thank you so kindly. I really feel more humble now.
Can we clap now?
Okay, so we will. My wife couldn't be with me. She was to DC over the past few days. She's on the way home, otherwise she'd have been with me.
Well, we'll see if we can get this on the clip done and we'll get it recorded so that you can have it. How's that sound?
Why did you have him holding his plaque and the major flag? Doug takes the picture. A nice addition to the photo.
The news media now.
Smile.
Let me get that.
I wonder if we, if you move the.
Table?
Table, sure. Terry's flag.
I love it when farm boys do good.
You have to move in nice and close together and Terry, why don't you?
But there's three of us here. I don't have that. Yeah.
Sounds good. Okay, everybody, nice and close and good smiles, everybody right here. Okay. Sounds good.
Great.
Great.
Great. So much.
So rebuild the records. Sounds great.
Good seeing you, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys, for coming. Terry, thanks for a great show.
That was a good job.
Wonderful job.
Nice to see you.
Joel.
Flag thing was awesome. It was a great, great.
Well, I got hold of the Veterans Corps here for Mr. Braley. You know, I guess for us doing the five, six, seven years, it's one thing. Nineteen years is.
That's a great, great time of service.
Probably have something special.
Oh, I do too. I do too.
You know what? I think it touched him.
Oh, it did. It certainly was.
It was cool.
Very deserving. Very deserving. Yeah, that's what a great commitment.
You know, it's, and he's been doing for, he's seen so many changes. You guys know. I mean, it's going from, like I said, one day a week and we had to call people again, get meetings and send stuff out. It took a month to get approval and then, you know, so now it's all, everything happens pretty fast now.
Oh, yeah.
And it is, it's all federal now. All right, good job. I have some information to partake, pass on for you, gentlemen. This will give you a little bit of.
How many members on your commission?
Sorry?
Three, just three guys. And that's been the same ever since it's been set up?
Um, yeah, some have five, three's fine for here, it looks good. We try to do it geographically as much as possible.
Sure.
It's not always possible. We try to get representation from different wars. One of the things that we'd like to see would be maybe representation from the female community.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's getting easier, but it's also kind of hard to simply because while as much, well, the Navy and the Air Force, about twenty-three, twenty-four percent are actually females. In the Army and Marines, that's less the case. So we look at the two services that are the largest services, typically your, the Army's by far is bigger than all the others combined. The pool is not very large, so that does create some challenges.
All your, all your members, your Air Force, your other members are in the Army?
Um, we got one Marines, two Army.
Okay, so you got a pretty good first group.
Oh, no, excuse me. No, we got Army, Navy and Marines. Ed's in the Navy.
Ed was in the Navy.
So you got, we got Army, Navy and Marines and then I'm in the Air Force. So actually all the services.
You got all the services, yeah. Now Coast Guard, do they qualify?
Yes, they do.
They do?
And so do merchant Marines during certain times.
Oh, merchant Marines, really?
During World War II, certain merchant Marines serving in certain areas of the world, particularly along the eastern seaboard, the eastern seaboard, in fact qualified for veterans.
Benefits?
Yes, they do.
I didn't realize.
They had to be on certain ships, certain times, doing certain things. Because, yeah, they were, they were.
They were part of.
They were part of a ship, sure.
They actually took merchant Marine ships, put guns on them and they were, provided their own self-defense. So, yeah, they were, they were not much different than a Coast Guard.
Really?
But they also went to deep water, so, yeah, they suffered some pretty serious losses.
I'm sure.
So, all right, this, what I'm here to do now is to provide a, kind of a general overview of what's been occurring with the VA.
Terry, would you have a copy that the news media could look at? Is that another copy?
Of this?
What we just gave us.
What we just gave us?
Um, yeah, probably do actually.
Sure ain't nothing.
Yeah. This will be started, I'll try to, I'll try to keep you up as we go. The first thing we're gonna talk about actually, and just to get a sense of where we're at, is what's called a GDX. That would be this one here, okay? The GDX is, the, the VA puts together a compilation of numbers. Okay, I've got the full one. I tended like extracted down to get the ones in our geographic area, the five surrounding counties that were associated with. What's nice about it is they're not all, they're all geographically represented in our part of the state, but they're not necessarily all similar from a demographic standpoint. Two of the counties that are included here, of course, are Clinton and Dubuque, which demographically are significantly larger than us, particularly Dubuque. So it shows kind of a blend of different types of counties and how we might relate to each other. So you've got a point of comparison. And what we see here is that the five counties that we have here is the vet, what they believe is the veteran population. There's, there's a number of ways they go about that, but right now we, in this county, we have approximately eighteen-hundred-and-twenty-six veterans. Now, this ended October first with the end of the federal fiscal year. So it's a little dated, but it's as close as you're gonna get. My estimation, based on the numbers of individuals that have passed, is that we're closer to eighteen-hundred because of those that have passed since October. So, something over eighteen-hundred, about there. We picked up a few new young veterans, but not that many. And that's normal. So what we see is that in terms of veteran population, Dubuque is the largest. That makes sense, they are the largest population. And typically this represents about ten percent of our population of our county when they look at the, the overall numbers. The, with eighteen-hundred or eighteen-hundred-and-twenty-six, we ranked number four in the five county areas in terms of total veteran population. In total expenditures, that's the money that the VA has paid to us in our, on our behalf in various categories. We're ranked fourth, which is reasonable because that's our population. It means that we're getting the same amount of money from the federal government generally, which is for our veterans in various programs as the surrounding counties, okay? Where we want to look is we want to see where we start to deviate to some degree. One of those is compensation where we're ranked third. We also are in education vocational rehab. It's not a very big number. That, that number that we're looking at in total expenditures is eight-point-four million dollars, just short of that. Eight million, three-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars. Now, the compensation and pension is money that's paid, those are cash in-hand payments to our veterans. That would be for people that either qualify for compensation for service-connected disabilities or for pension payments to either veterans or their widows, widowers in some cases. If, and some veterans, when they, pensions are typically paid to people who are in a minimal, in economic status. For example, for an individual that is a widow of a veteran, they have to make, it is a little about eighteen, eight-hundred-and-seven, eighteen, or eight-thousand-seven-hundred dollars a year after medical expenses are paid before they can get any compensation. So I wouldn't want my mother necessarily on that, so it's, it's pretty low, but it's, it's another safety net program. For veterans that have a spouse and they're on what's called aid and attendance, there's, there's various levels. There's a basic pension, then there's housebound, then it goes to aid and attendance, that's the highest level. It's paid at about twenty-five-thousand-four-hundred dollars. So if your income is below that after your medical expenses, and this is, it's really hard to use the pension program for nursing homes because of the nature of where they work. You either have enough money to pay nursing homes along with your insurance or you end up going Title X. It's, this will help a little bit with that, but that's about, that's about the end of it. It can be used, but it's a little harder because if you have the money to pay for part of the medical care, then you probably have enough money that you don't qualify for the assistance, so. However, what works well is in-home. So if you've got an individual that is in in-home care, for example, that is in a wheelchair or mostly wheelchair-bound or needs help with a variety of activities. Maybe they're getting to where they're, can't be left alone and you have to have nursing care there and so on. And the state may pay for some, federal government may pay for some under Medicare and so on. The veterans, if they're not being covered by medical insurance for the veterans and those, that comes into play also, the pension also is a part of it. So anything, it's out of pocket. So it's a variety of programs. Educational vocational rehab is people that are, either, either they're basic GI Bill stuff or it's people that are getting additional help because they have disabilities or so on and need assistance in learning how to cope with your disabilities regarding to work. Insurance indemnities, medical care. Medical care is one of the biggest ones and medical care in unique patients is what is paid to our folks to support the medical piece. In other words, these are predominantly, if the larger share is the medical care, that's what's paid for people at the VA hospitals and clinics specifically, okay? Unique patients is medical care that's paid for to doctors other than medical, actual VA facilities. What's the neat, the thing to note about this of all those is that in, we rank number third in comp and pen, insurance and educational. So while we're not getting as much inpatient and so on care as, well, we're not going below the fourth place, so we're staying with our standard. Where we exceed is in the comp and pen area. That's one of the areas where we actually get better returns and that goes back to what we talked about earlier. Sorry, moving people out of county-funded programs into more federally funded programs, okay? So this is an area with, and if you look at us, while we're number four in population, in per vet payments, we actually are ranked number two. Only Dubuque gets more money per vet than we do in that compensation package. So that's, that's really, really good. And again, a lot of this goes back to my predecessors because it's really ended in October, so it's more about what Larry and Junior did than I did during the last first couple of months, first six months I was here, so. All right, the next document that you look at is. If I didn't give you my copy here, okay? Is CBSO report. And basically, what's interesting here is Iowa, of all of these states, Illinois, Iowa, Kansas, Minnesota, Missouri, Nebraska, North Dakota, South Dakota, Wisconsin. These are all in what's called Vision Twenty-three and this is the service network area that the regional hospitals in Iowa fall under, okay? Just so you know. We're looking, we're, we're number two and that's, that's because we have three hospitals in Iowa and we have a very, very large service area. So the amount of money that's paid to people in these hospitals amounts to five-hundred-and-fifteen million dollars. That's a lot of money. And you can see a lot of it, most of it's direct care and then if you look at the non-VA care, that would be, for example, I had some eczema that they took care of at a, at a private, a private doctor. That would be that, an example of care because they didn't have the specialist to take care of it. All right, that's, that's the biggest thing in that. Now, the next thing I'm sharing with you is what's been going on in our office specifically, and that's, we're gonna look at right now is a five-month track basically of the number of people and some of the specific people. I think I shared a little of this with you before, I'm just gonna kind of quickly go over this so that I can roll into what's happened in the last two months also. As you can see, we've continued to see an increase in terms of the functionality of who we're seeing. A lot of it is things like, the number of contacts have gone up rather dramatically over last year's period of time. If you look at the number of female vets, I highlighted specific ones I was looking at were things like female vets, we're up eighty-three percent. Family members, seventy-nine percent. That's because of pension plans. It's family members coming in, trying to get their elderly Korean and/or World War II veterans or their spouses into pension programs that are available. So that's one of the reasons I've had a lot of that going on in the last few months. It's kind of a demographic that's coming to a head right now, much the way Agent Wirth did for the Vietnam veterans with service-connected disabilities. There's a lot more in the sixty to sixty-nine range you can see. I reallocated the ages to better represent the war periods because they had kind of come out of sequence as we, the veterans got older and they just didn't match up for war. A lot of it is the federal forms. As you can see, as we moved to computer-based, we've gone from sixty-two federal forms in that five-month period, six-month period to three-hundred-and-eight federal forms. It's, it's the nature.
Oh, sure.
The upside is, is that's because when people come in, instead of spending time and helping them do a little bit of form and they go home to fill it out and they come back and we check it over, make sure it's right and send it in, we're actually engaging them and actually producing the form with their assistance right there in the computer, helping them get it done and completed and actually out that time, okay? We're also filing the, what they call the interim form or the informal form to let the VA know that a claim is being made to protect them. For example, we're at the twenty-fourth. If I don't file one of the claims this month, then they're, to start their claim period for payment for first of next month, if I wait till next month because I'm waiting for the full claim to get done, then they lose a potential month of eligibility and could cost them money. So there's a number of things that come into play here. Lot more county claims, as you can see, federal forms, of course. So the biggest thing though is, is the manner in which we're doing business has changed rather dramatically. All right, how that, how that affects is these next two pieces, which is two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen. Make sure if I gave you a copy of that or not. If not, I will, you know what, I might have it here. Think I got a copy for it. The one on top would be thirteen, the one behind that would be fourteen for May. And what we see here in May alone in total contacts, I'm just gonna hit a couple of key ones, fifty-four percent for just May. If we look at May and June as a total going on to the last set of forms there, you're looking at actually as much as seventy-seven percent increase. It's the problem, remember we talked about what happened when I, when we started doing the GA process?
Yes.
And because I was in the office, I was seeing more and more people, well, it's, it's continued. It hasn't stopped. The more exposure I get, the more manner, the more times that I'm actually available to people, the more people I'm seeing. They just, they, they're starting now to come on a regular basis. If I track Monday, Tuesdays versus the other days, the Monday, Tuesday segment has now started to pass the Wednesday statement, which was always the busiest day because that was always my first day of the week. So I'm not sure what we're gonna, how we're gonna play this as we go forward. I know you've been very, very understanding. I've had, I've had some people, what the GDX doesn't show is the number of people. The GDX is set up by zip code, okay? So if your zip code is a zip code in this county, then your, your benefits get reflected in that report. Now, in some cases, I've got people from Sebula going down to Clinton and other people from Bellevue going up to Dubuque. Simply because we're not here on Mondays and Tuesdays. Now, that's been less the case. That's what's happening is as we're doing this, I've actually already changed, in the last two weeks, I've already changed two, three people over from a Dubuque address to a Bellevue address. And you say, well, how did that happen? Well, because they go up to Dubuque because they're, they're five days a week. What's happening is, is that they go up there, but, you know, I can't service you if you're not from Dubuque. So they use their mom's address, their brother's address, a cousin's address, wherever they can get their mail so that they can justify getting serviced by Dubuque. The problem is they don't live in Dubuque. Now, that doesn't mean we're losing money, it just means on paper we're losing money. Notice how the GDX reflects numbers. I did an informal look over the last sixty days and it looks like we have probably somewhere between fifteen and thirty individuals that are being serviced out of Dubuque and reflected on the GDX. Now, that's not a lot, but it's, it's enough. It adds up. Based on the average that we've got, and that's, I have to use that number because I have no other, it means about three-hundred-thousand dollars, okay? That puts us precariously close to passing Dubuque in the per, per vet cap because if we shift their monies down here, it makes, it makes a difference. Now, we didn't lose the money. The monies are still coming to people in this county, still being expended here. It's, it's a administrative glitch in the matter that stuff is referred, so I'm just making you aware. I've already started the process of continuing to work towards exposing myself as much as possible and that's, that's a good thing and a bad thing. Because the more exposure I get, whether it's in media like this or because of other things that are going on, whether it's on the radio or in the newspaper. And the media's been very generous to us lately. The downside is, is that I'm having trouble keeping up, to be honest with you, point blank. And I've been working closer to forty hours than the twenty hours I should be on more than I should. Now, we're not running out of money. We, we got things squared away for this year and the budget is probably okay, but particularly because we've got it weighted with the combination without a problem. So that's not an issue. The issue is more for us to be aware of what's going on because as we move into the next budget period, we have to have a better understanding of what we, what the expectations of the office is, what the county can afford, how do we manage that process, you know, and so on and so forth. I'm not changing my stance that I don't want this to be a permanent, a full-time job. That will not change ever, but that may present some problems as we move forward, partly because as I get to sixty-two and whether I choose to go with or not to take social security, that can dictate whether or not I can work twenty hours a week or not, or if I can work twenty-five hours a week or whatever, because I can only get so, get so much money as wages. And I, I'm not gonna take county money and then turn it around and give it back to the feds. That will not happen. That would be silly, right? So I'm doing this. So I'm doing this. So I'm, I'm being, I'm trying to stay as far ahead of this as we can. I don't want to get beyond what your expectations are, so we're relatively, I mean, we're completely safe at this particular point in time. There's a sufficient flexibility. The problem is, is that we kind of have some of that money in the, in the salary budget for a particular reason, that's to protect the county. So I got, we can't necessarily look at that as a, an exhaustible resource, okay? So, because that's not the way it was designed, okay? So I just like, need to let you know that as, as we move on, we might have to say, okay, we're going to have to put some severe limitations on it or we have to look at how we're, you know, how we use this stuff. So that's kind of where we're at. I can tell you right now that based on the way we designed this, we will have sufficient money to support both programs effectively with very limited, very little, very little limitations in the foreseeable future, meaning this next fiscal year. So that is not the problem as I see it. It's a matter of how those loosely planned resources are utilized relative to the general relief picture. I can tell you right now that you're getting at least twenty-five hundred dollars or so back from the VA budget because we did not use all of the support budget. The administrative budget was utilized and a little bit more, but it's because of the salary piece, but we've accounted for that with the GA, we discussed that. But the, the piece, I did not use all of the support piece because there were not enough applications that qualified to utilize all of the budget that we had planned for this year. And if we look at that as we go forward, that's probably going to be the case next year. So we've got some cushion there. So I just wanted to reassure you of that. And of course, if we do this on a quarterly basis, you'll, you'll have plenty of time for us to, you know, tweak things out. I, I do not in any way, shape or form feel at this time that we have insufficient funds to support the activities that we're doing at this time and appear to be doing as we move forward through the next fiscal year. As we go into the next budget period or budget planning period in December and January, we need to look forward, you know, two or three years and see how the office will continue to evolve and how, and what your expectations of that office should be relative to the demonstrated need of our veterans as well as our general relief population.
Yeah, because then we'll have another set of numbers.
Uh, we won't have GDX until, they don't come out till March.
Oh, okay, okay.
But I will have the tracking.
The tracking.
That I will have.
Because every set of numbers and forms gives a bigger picture for us.
The, the GDX we won't, but the rest of it, before, before we have to make a budget.
Once a year then this?
The GDX come out, comes out once a year. It is, it ends, it is done, the other one is not. The other one's done ending in January. That one's a little more recent, but it still takes us long to first to get the information. We will not have a GDX again until probably, it comes out in April. So by the time I get a chance to filter through it, pull out appropriate information, it's about a month or so before I can present it to you. But, so we will have that to confirm things. So we're going to have to rely on this other tracking data, but I do, to kind of feel the way through as we roll into the next fiscal year's planning process to find out what we want to continue to do in terms of expectation and, you know, can we continue to support what we're doing or do we have to modify or tweak and, you know, how many hours are really going to be needed or not needed and that kind of thing. So I think the GA piece has pretty much run its course in terms of true need, okay? I think we've worked through most of that. I think the process now is well in place. It's going to be more of the fact that the veterans portion of it is just, it's exploding, guys, I'm not, like I said, I'm up seventy. The month of May and June combined compared to May and June last year, I've seen or talked to people on the phone working to resolve their problems in the VA piece, seventy-seven percent more than the previous year. It's that much more. So, well, we started looking at twenty-five percent back in December when we talked last time. Then we looked at about thirty percent, twenty-eight to thirty percent here about four months ago, three months ago. It, it's, it just, it's continuing to grow. The more I'm available, the more, more people come in. That's partly because there's knowing that I'm there and partly because they're actually, they're actually seeking me out. The majority of the people that I'm seeing, well, it's not fair. A significantly larger portion of the people that I'm seeing are coming from the eastern side of the county where they were not before. There's a, there's a demographic shift going on. So that's, that's something to be aware of and partly because it's, I'm, I'm available more so they're finding that they can get to me more easily.
Absolutely.
I'm in the process right now of looking to project the office into the eastern side of the county and probably Bellevue. It's the second-largest population base. And that's also makes it easier for the folks in Sebula to get to, probably twice a month, okay? And by doing that, I'm going to look to precede the driver's license office so that I can do driver's license verification for veterans so they can get that done and then come in the following week or something and get their, get their, the driver's sticker on the driver's license. So I've seen significant requests for that and a number of people have asked for it. So I'm going to, I'm going to toy with that and see if I can make that happen for at least a period of three to six months and see what response I get. I won't be able to do everything there because I can't take everything I need there, but I can do a lot there. I can do a lot of interviews, I can do a lot of preset forming, forms, I can do a lot of, you know, get that set, come back here, get them done and then go back and finish them or have them come in just one time instead of having to make that trick several times, particularly folks that are seventies and eighties. And a winner, that can be very challenging. So we're going to toy with that and see how it works. So I'm just trying to make myself as available as I can to as many of our populations as I can.
That's great.
Well, that'll work for GA to some degree too. If I can go over there, it doesn't mean that I can't make an arrangements to meet people, people for that too. So, I mean, I'm just trying to make it as easy for all the people in the county to get to me as possible.
Well, you're making the county a better place by doing that. We really appreciate it.
We do.